Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to this City Council's special meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Ms. Colasetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quizenberry. Mayor Marlin.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from previous meeting. Just as a note, Councilmember Wilkin had suggested some changes on the straw poll and the chair of the committee, is that correct? Yes. Can I have a motion?
I'll move the minutes from 3:1824 and 3:2524 as amended.
A second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Additions to the agenda, I'm going to move the regular agenda item, the ordinance number 2024-04019, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number eight, to the next City Council meeting due to some absences that we have this evening. Next up is presentation and public input. We'll go ahead and, since we don't have a presentation, we'll go ahead and do public input. For those who would like to address the City Council, please step up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, community. My name is Janice Walker, and I live in Urbana. When I was a much younger woman, I dreamed of becoming a police officer, partly because I respected the position. And I grew up with a mother who worked for and retired from the headquarters for Chicago Police Department when it was located on 11th and State Street as the first Black woman to supervise record inquiry. I can recall the many lunches we shared at a nearby Greek-owned restaurant alongside many officers, mostly white men, and I don't recall there being any women, and definitely no officers of color. This was the time in my life when I realized Black people literally were never at the table. In my upbringing, I began to understand there are good and bad cops. I also understand that my tax dollars pay their salaries, and therefore I should have a voice in how these dollars are spent. As a tax-paying community member, I now understand that more police don't make me feel safe, nor do I believe that more police will make my community any safer. I encourage those of you who have never researched the history of the police to check out sagepub.com. It's S-A-G-E-P-U-B dot com. The Beginning of American Policing: The English Influence. Also, I found a scholarly article written by Danica Gordon, an assistant professor of sociology in the School of Arts and Sciences at Tufts University, who analyzes policing in a large Midwestern city to show the relationship between residential segregation and policing practices. Through extensive fieldwork that included ride-alongs with officers, she shows how police react to and help create segregated spaces, producing racialized outcomes even in the absence of racial intent. Two million dollars could and should change the lives of our most vulnerable, reducing the need for more officers because we cannot police our way out of poverty or mental health crisis. It's time that we acknowledge the harm, give hope, and begin healing. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you for your input. The next person, please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Dorcas Withers. First and foremost, I appreciate all those in attendance for allowing me the moment to address this council. As I say, my name is Dorcas Withers. I stand before you not only as a supporter of my community, but also a product of my community. A lot of times, you see people who take time out of their daily lives to come up with an outside-looking-in view to aid the so-called urban community. They come and get their views on how to protect our community, which, don't get me wrong, is very much appreciated. But honestly, without living here, growing up here, and seeing on a 24-hour, 365-days-a-year basis, you'll never understand what goes on behind the scenes. This misunderstanding can cause financial, emotional, and community support to be misdirected. So with your permission, I would like to be the voice of my community, the tour guide for those who only walk through my community is through local news and social media. I'm one who was born and raised in an urban community. I grew up in Chicago with the bare necessities. I fell into the streets at an early age because the only people I saw standing up in my community was the guys in the street. I witnessed those in my community being beaten, set up, and constantly harassed by those same officers who swore to protect us. So just like those who came before me, I grew up with a graces like for law enforcement. I stand before you as a man who once aided in tearing down my community, who was tortured by law enforcement for over 12 hours at the age of 16 years old, and charged for first-degree murder, a man who spent 27 and a half years incarcerated before a judge decided to hear my argument of my innocence. And that was only after it was shown that over 100 other individuals had the same complaint against these officers. I believe that there is no strange happenings during life, because without my incarceration, I would probably either be dead or still tearing down my community. Because honestly, what I started to see was, as the years went on, the urban children started to coming into these jails at a young age at alarmingly high rate, and their sentencing ranges from 75 years to 90 years at 100 percent, and sometimes even natural life. Can you imagine a man ranging from the age of 14 to 25 who was told that he would spend the rest of his life incarcerated? Seeing this, I began to realize that my purpose in life was to rebuild that which I took part in destroying. I want to speak a little bit on the proposal of the 15 officers that is to be hired to this police department. While I understand your need to protect the community, I feel that the money can be used in a much more better place. But, excuse me, but, like, as in de-escalation in these officers, training and de-escalation, how to properly determine what force should be used in volatile situations, and how to interact with the community they're patrolling. These young men and women in this community from birth has grown on, has grown up seeing officers arrest their parents, their uncles, their cousins, their friends. They've heard the stories of the beatings of their grandparents suffered at the hands of police during the civil rights movement. They've witnessed three or more squad cars on the traffic stop of their families and friends. But what they don't witness is these same police coming to their graduations at any of their sports functions. None of these officers are there to congratulate these individuals, to tell them that they're doing good, to show, to show them that their promise is being recognized. They're told that they were amounts of nothing, just like their parents. My proposal is that there be a panel set up, composed of the police department, someone who's able to go into the communities and get feedback on what they need, and someone who's skilled in the study of mental illness and the effect it has on inner-city youth growing up in these communities. Because you can't fix my community if you don't understand my community. This panel can dictate how we can use funds for police community activities, to show these kids that they're not, that they're not in their communities to arrest them, but to support them and assist them in their growth. I represent the First Followers, an organization who's committed to uplifting, supporting, the betterment, and the protection of these communities. And we're willing to sit as members on a panel to assist those who are just as passionate as we are in the betterment of our community and those around them. I thank you for their, I thank you for your time and patience, and I look forward to coming together with the members of this panel, with the Urbana Police Department, and those I serve in my communities to better our county, our lives, and our communities going, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Is there anybody else who would like to address the City Council at this time?
Hi, Council. My name is Camille Cobb, and I am an assistant professor in computer science at the University of Illinois. I do research that uses methodologies that are pretty similar to the ones that were used in this Barry Dunn report. I do interviews, I do surveys, I collect data, and then I do both qualitative and quantitative statistical analyses of this data as part of my work. And I've spoken here before about this, but it was before I'd had as much of a chance to get into the details of this report. But I already had the sense that there were parts of this report that really just weren't up to the standards of the type of work that we do in, at the university. Despite the fact that my papers tend to be closer to 12 pages, and they cover all the bases, there's a lot of fluff in that report. But I did want to say that when I spoke before, it's possible that I didn't give strong enough praise to the effort that was made to do this. My understanding is that Councilmembers Bishop and Colasetti, that y'all were some of the folks who really led the effort to get this data about our community, to sort of like, understand what was happening here, and that it started with an effort toward alternatives to policing. This is from before I was here, but, but I've done my research and done my different form of research. I've gone on the internet and like, read sort of the history, watched former council meetings, to understand what the original goals of this were. And so it's my understanding that that's what this was initially meant to be about. So I really, it's really disappointing to me that this both didn't achieve the initial goals, and also that it was done really poorly, honestly. And I don't mean this as an attack, like, I do this research, it's difficult to learn these skills, I'm potentially open to consulting, so reach out. But, yeah, so I want to draw attention to the asymmetry between what was asked for and what was given, the fact that often the recommendations really don't align with the data, which I think many folks will draw attention to, and then we could talk sort of offline another time about some of the ways that the methods don't align with the data. For the rest of my time, I'd like to draw attention, so I went on, and I found, it was difficult to find Barry Dunn reports that have been published for other cities for me. If y'all have access to more, I would love to have access to some of those, because a comparison seems really apt, and it does some, some important informing. I did found, find one that was done for Oak Park, Illinois. And while I want to acknowledge that it is totally possible that Oak Park has the exact same problems as us, and that their police are exactly the same in some of these qualitative ways, that seems somewhat unlikely to me, and so I want to read some selections of these reports that were really almost wholesale the same. It really feels like a Mad Libs-style report. So in Urbana, we said, sort of, the nature of the study, based on the nature of the study, you might conclude that police and fire departments are in poor condition. However, Barry Dunn wishes to state the opposite. In Oak Park, the report says that, based on the nature of the study, I'm paraphrasing that part, but this is verbatim, "One might conclude that the police department is in poor condition." Their report was only about the police department, not both. Barry Dunn wishes to state the opposite. Do we really come to opposite conclusions in both these cases? That feels surprising. And I really didn't do a thorough job of comparing these. These are just some of the things I noticed most immediately. In Urbana, both the UPD and UFD, like many public safety organizations, have faced challenges in recent years, particularly related to staffing. But Barry Dunn made many observations of positive aspects of both departments, including some that might be considered promising or best practices. In Oak Park, the OPD, OPPD, has faced, faced some challenges, challenges in recent years, particularly related to staffing. Barry Dunn made many positive observations of the OPPD, some of which are examples of best practices that other agencies would do well to emulate. In Urbana, during interviews with staff, it was clear to Barry Dunn that UPD strives to instill strong ethical values and the highest level of integrity in its members. In Oak Park, during interviews with staff, it was clear to Barry Dunn that the OPPD strives to instill strong ethical values and the highest level of integrity in its members. One more. And this is really only because limited time, and I didn't have time to go through 300 pages of two different reports. In Urbana, Barry Dunn found that the leadership at all levels within the department, found the leadership at all levels within the department, generally experienced, skilled, engaged, and concerned with making decisions that benefit the community and the organization and the individuals who comprise it. In Oak Park, Barry Dunn found the leadership at all levels within the department competent, engaged, and concerned with making decisions that benefit the community and the organization. I hope that you'll consider what I've said here. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this body?
Good evening. My name is Danielle Chenoweth. I serve as Cunningham Township Supervisor, Public Health Board President, Executive Committee Member of the Continuum of Service Providers, the Homeless, and as a field instructor for the U of I School of Social Work. Township is regularly called on to respond to crises. We directly served over 5,000 residents last year, 2023. Township and our partners, First Followers, UTRI, Win Recovery, RPC, and many others, definitely helped to create the last two years of record-low crime rates in Urbana. As we build this scaffolding with our partners, it has become clear where there are missing pieces. Shelter beds, we have about half what we need. Subsidized housing, we have about a fifth of what we need. Affordable housing, two-thirds of Urbana renters need this. And a 24/7 drop in space for those dealing with mental health crises. The living room, run by Rose Glance, has entirely closed due to funding issues. We need a responder model that sends the right expert to calls for service from the community and does so in a way that is safe for all, trauma-informed, and equitable regardless of race, gender, class, student status, et cetera. We are a progressive community who are well-positioned to build an alternative responder model, like the dozens of sister communities our office is currently studying. To launch this, we have committed, the city has committed over a quarter million dollars to the work of Barry Dunn. I've reviewed the Barry Dunn report carefully and have the following questions. In our review of successful alternative responder models, they have always been built in close community partnership with existing organizations who have expertise in providing crisis response. How does the city and Barry Dunn intend to move in collaboration to build an effective model that works? I would like to suggest the council create an alternative responder model task force that walks alongside the Barry Dunn work, and I offer to chair that task force as a 20-year-trained facilitator. I have shown the Barry Dunn model to nearly a dozen academics in data analysis, and no academic has yet been able to answer my question of how they draw some of the recommendations from the data in the report. The most obvious question is how can they recommend 14 more police staff members when 72 percent of service calls are either for non-crimes, 64 percent, or music and noise complaints? We have two to three times the calls for service as similarly studied cities. Such numbers cry out for the obvious, to create an alternative responder model prior to further police investment, to reduce the call burden at a fraction of the cost, and then see what else we need to do at the police level. A sworn officer with the requirement of 16 weeks of training costs about $100,000 annually. Compare that to a licensed social worker with six years of education and/or experience, which costs $55,000 a year. Both of those are starting pay, just pay and benefits. The first phase of Barry Dunn reports recommend, recommends adding seven sworn officers. We should take a close look at the justification for this, which is not due to overtime, that's what I thought they would say, or being short on officers, I also thought that would be what was said, it's to free up 40 percent, nearly half of police time, to do officer-initiated contact. The data that they offer in their report shows that officer-initiated contact in Urbana is largely traffic stops. Traffic stops in Urbana have a long record of unacceptable racial bias. This goes back 30 years since the collection of data. So I don't understand that recommendation, because it seems to exacerbate racial disparities. So in my reading of the last seven years of city budgets, there's been a reallocation of general fund resources away from community development and community-based programs towards police and fire. And yet we've not seen an adjustment of public safety institutions to meet the new reality of public safety, severe weather, heat, cold, and smoke, housing precarity, and increase in mental health and substance abuse needs. So we need to embrace a new model, and I am here to partner with you in that. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the committee? Sorry, the council, we're not in committee tonight.
Hi there, my name is Ben Jocelyn. You've heard a lot of things from me before. One of the things I want to address is just sort of a couple of things, and I really don't think that, like, so often we portray these things where we say, well, we don't want more cops, and folks are like, oh, you're anti-cop. The fact that there are, there's been a 30 percent increase in police budget over the last couple of years, over the terms that many of you've sort of been here, and a disinvestment in some of the other civil structures, simply means that not investing more cops, like, if I said I want to abolish the police department here, which, granted, I am a person who wants to look at long-term other structures, and have been heard to say that sort of thing, but a police position of saying, we don't want to invest in more police right now, shouldn't be seen as anti-cop, and we want to invest in other structures that support and solve the problems that we need. We've got folks who cost less money with more education, who are trained in solving the problem so that they don't need to be responded to with criminal backgrounds. There's folks who say, you know, we've seen bad policing, and it's not here. Chief Boone has said, you know, if, if you give me the folks, I'll make sure that the folks are accountable when they're here. But I've lived in this community since before Chief Boone was here, and I'll probably be here long after Chief Boone is gone, and if we hire more police now, we will likely never see more police in the future, because police positions don't go away. Even though the Barry Dunn report says that we decrease staffing positions because of calls to defund the police, that's a quote from the Barry Dunn report, but I've, it's just factually not true. So I, I find it makes the whole report suspect. But, but then we talk about sort of this, we saw the graph on the Barry Dunn thing about when police calls for service happen, and we've got talk about how we want 12-hour, how we need to have enough staffing at the peaks of service, and, and we don't want to have any police officers who are retired, or responding to calls when they're, when they're super tired. But then we've got a 12-hour model that's been in place since 1999. And you can't have a, a model that is able to respond to peaks in services when you're constrained to 12-hour shifts and some of these other contracts. And when you look at folks who aren't within the, or when you start to look at alternative response models, where you can hire community members who could not be constrained by, by police contracts and, and could work shorter periods of time at peak hours, to make it so that we can have a lower number of employees who need to be on staff at all times, and then also get to have appropriate staffing at times when there are peak service amounts, that would save the city money, and it would, you know, as other folks have said, also have a chance of putting in place folks who are trained in the specific cause or need that the, the community members are having when they call the, the emergency response folks. And, yeah, I just think in general, we have a need to invest in the world that we deserve and find beautiful, and there's so many things that we know cause crime, and, and I think if we invest in those and invest in each other, the world will be a better place. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else like to address the council?
Hi, my name's Sana Sabwala. I'm a Urbana resident for the last six years and a member of the CU Muslim Action Committee. At CU MAC, we're generally opposed to hiring more police. Muslims in this country are overpoliced, especially true for Black Muslims. We've seen firsthand how more police doesn't translate to safer communities. Also, the extent of police presence from multiple police departments for a peaceful protest on campus this weekend is a sign to me that we have more than enough police. The Barry Dunn report itself mentions that most emergency calls are not about criminal activity, and it seems to me that the city could invest more in Cunningham Township and other community organizations directly that could hire experts with specific training that have already established community ties to deal with community needs, rather than sworn officers and non-s sworn officers who are part of the police. So I agree with everything that Danielle Chenoweth said earlier. I personally would like more information about the idea of community service responder personnel and what they provide and how they are trained. I don't think having a police-associated community personnel would be better than investing in community networks that already have been built over the past years. And it seems like many community members want more input into how our city could help us be safer. And I don't have as much information or research as many of the other speakers, but it's clear that the community does want more input on what happens here, rather than just hiring police directly. So I'm here as a community member to say that I don't feel that more sworn officers are justifiable at this time at all. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Yeah, hi. Oh, I know. I just wasn't sure if I could handle the microphone and the paper at the same time. Oh, it tilts. Okay. Hi, my name is Lila Leopold, an Urbana resident, and I am also adding my support here to exploring more alternative models and more depth outside of the Barry Dunn report. A lot of what I've noted just from pursuing, perusing the document quickly has already been noted by other folks in this room, but I think I'd fall in the category of someone who's read this and noted how the proposed methods and the data seem misaligned, to say the least. And, and, so I'll just offer a few very sort of basic reflections on that and questions that I've noticed and that others around me reviewing the document have noticed, in case it's helpful. With the addition of seven sworn officers and seven non-s sworn community service responding officers, it's very unclear how these positions would work together. I'm not seeing, I really want to see more information about that. It seems like all of the proposals are made to add additional positions into an existing system that has created the sort of discrepancies and inequities that are provided in the report, rather than a plan forward to making alterations to the system that might benefit everybody, including, I, there's, I mean, I'm curious how a community service responder would be trained, what are their tasks, what are their qualifications? I mean, others have already said this, so I'll sort of skip that. To also include, I mean, I'm curious if there are already sworn officers who'd like to pursue training and education to maybe become community service responders? I mean, there's other ways that existing officers could be retrained if they so desired, or it also seems like the specific role that different types of officers play that is worth examining to make sure that everyone with their specific tasks and training is really aligned to the call at hand, and that there are other models for community service responder like or type positions already in the community through other organizations, such as, such as those that have already been mentioned here, that I also add my support to pursuing those existing options that are already networked into the community. And if there's interest in adding a so-called community service responder, I think really looking at the requirements of what that job is and how they fit into an existing model or a model that I think would be more appropriate with the community, seems like that's a step that deserves as much, you know, attention and time as is being given to this report. So I think my call is, is basically for taking a look at the existing system and not simply following these, these suggestions as given by the Barry Dunn report, but using the very helpful statistics about how many service, you know, how many, how much call volume and call time is allocated where seems helpful in these conversations, but maybe the recommendations that are made do not align with that. So I'll stop there and just add my support to those that have already spoken, so thank you.
Anybody else would like to address council? All right, seeing none, we did have one person email us asking for it to be read into the City Council record. So this is, hello, dear City Council, please read my comments out loud during public meetings. I have written and rewritten my comment multiple times, and each time it felt like I didn't know enough and needed to research more before sending it. This topic is not as natural to me as the Palestinian descent and experience, but actually it is. I was on campus Friday when police started showing up in riot gear and with tear gas and batons to disperse students standing up for sanctioned murder of Palestinians funded by their tuition money at UIUC. I was there as Urbana police arrived on scene because in our system, it is considered an appropriate response to invoke violence against protesters in some tents. I was there as an outside police, I was there as outside police forces were called in for a nonviolent campus issue. I was there. If Urbana police were truly in need of more officers, they wouldn't have the capacity to respond to this ridiculous outside calls. More police does not make it safer for all of us, and we need safer for all of us right now, not some, all. Sincerely, Dua. All right. That is the only...
I have one more.
Oh, my apologies. Shandra?
I came in during the meeting. This is from Jay McClintock. I hope you are doing well. As we continue our study of 911 calls and options for emergency response in Urbana, I wanted to reach out and underscore the huge potential we have to unburden our police officers and to provide a better, safer, and less costly alternative to gun carrying enforcement officers for the vast majority of the emergency incidents in Urbana. I noticed that if noise and music complaints are removed from the list of crimes, the percentage of noncriminal service-related calls are a staggering 72% of all the calls currently being handled by police officers, not to speak of fireworks, panhandling, and illegal dumping currently listed as crimes. We have better options for these noncriminal and nonviolent issues. I was very disappointed to hear that Barry Dunn does not apparently take this opportunity seriously, and during their last appearance at city council, they indicated that an investment in alternative responders for these nonviolent service calls would not reduce the workload of the police department at all. This makes no sense. If they are not going to take the request to study alternative response seriously, I suggest we cut our losses and hire a different consultant or simply get down to the work of engaging local agencies and building an alternative response system. I appreciate their work to gather this data, but we need a consultant who understands alternative response to help us build it. I have found it helpful to put the breakdown of service calls next to the breakdown of criminal calls, so I have attached that chart for your reference. Please read my letter into the public record if you get this email in time. Thank you. Sincerely, Jay McClintock.
The agenda is council input and communications. Would anybody like to provide input today? Grace.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank all the members of the public who came out and shared your input with us tonight. I'm glad we have Chief Boone. I was hoping you were listening remotely, or I don't know if I didn't see you back there. I also wanted to just make a brief comment about the situation on campus this weekend, and I hope that all the people out there, and especially those with power and guns, practice all the de-escalation training that they have at their disposal. It's made, it's been made pretty clear that council and the public doesn't have any control over the police department, so there's not really anything directly I can say or do about it, but I will just take this bit of three minutes that I have to speak freely on the record and say that I do support de-escalation, and I hope that the university's conversations are productive with their students and people on their space, and I hope that there can be a safe space for all the students and residents in our community. Thank you.
Anybody else like to add a comment? Jaeha?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a prepared statement, but do want to comment on just a couple of things. One, I appreciate the feedback from the community so far. This is going to continue to be a process. It's only one piece of the report, and I certainly am looking forward to seeing what else comes of it and wanting to continue to be engaged in the conversation about alternate responses. As was noted by someone who spoke today, that was the initial intent from my part, at least. You know, when council member Bishop and I discussed this, that that was what we wanted was really to think about, not just what model is expedient or can be put into place quickly, but what actually makes sense for our community. So, I think that there's still a long ways to go, and I hear that feedback from the community and hope that people will continue to engage in this process as we decide where we want to go from here. I also want to echo some of Grace's concerns. You know, I understand that folks have differing opinions in a lot of ways, but I think it's also important that we, as a city, stand up for individuals' rights to free speech and recognize that if someone is engaged in peaceful protests, that is not something that I would support our police department or any police department interfering with, and want to make that very clear. Thank you.
All right. Would anybody else like to offer a comment? Sharice?
I just want to say a couple of things. I was born, raised, and went through Urbana School District and everything, went, taken classes at U of I. I was taking classes even when they were protesting about South Africa divestment then. I graduated from Parkland, and I've lived in different cities, Louisville, Kentucky, Los Angeles, California, Inglewood, California, Culver City, California, Long Beach, California. And what I've noticed, and I even lived in Indianapolis for a minute, but what I cannot get out of my head is that a lot of people from other cities that live here, that were born and raised and went through whatever they went through, are attaching whatever issues they had with police in those areas to the city of Urbana and their police department. And the city of Urbana's police department, even, and I can be biased because I'm from here, okay, and I've experienced 20, 30 years ago, I mean, more than 30 something years ago, one incident in my years of dealing with Urbana police that didn't really come to anything except me thanking him for escorting me home after traveling behind me for about six blocks and not doing anything. He didn't try to stop me from going into my house. He didn't try to do anything else that one would consider violent or even keeping me from my rights. The neighborhood I live in, I'm often hearing about how over-policed we are, but I'm not seeing that. I love Urbana. I love the neighborhood I live in. I love the community that I came from, and I am not necessarily happy with always feeling that I, that for me to speak up and say, "Our neighborhood needs police." And if you've never had a call go unanswered, that happens, and it has happened here at least once that I can say in the 63 years that I have on this earth. That has happened only once that I can think of, and it was because of a shortage of staff. And that is unfortunate, and I would hate to see anybody else have to deal with that. So, I want people to just be more likely to think about for real the community that you're talking about when you, and not impose your own experiences because I'm sorry for any experiences that you've had elsewhere, but here in Urbana, I've not, I've not seen that, observed it, or experienced it. So, it's a different thing. Our police aren't awful people.
Anybody else wish to speak this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will go on to unfinished business. I don't believe there is any reports of standing committees. We've moved, for those of you who were not here originally, we've moved the regular agenda item on to the next city council meeting. So, we have reports of special committees, reports of officers, and last but not least, the Barry Dunn study. Michelle?
Just for council and the community's information, Michelle's going to start with a statement. We have a list of questions that were given pre-today's meeting. She'll go through all of those, and then after that, I'll open up questions to the council members. So, the floor is yours whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to go through some of this, and I want to just kind of start out, to begin with, to talk a little bit about kind of where we are, where we're going. Some of the questions or comments that folks have made will get addressed as I go through some of the other questions that were provided to me, and I believe that everyone on council should have a list of those questions in sequence. So, but before we get into that, I just want to kind of orient people to where we are within this process. First of all, as you all know, a lot of the conversation, what we're going to talk about tonight, has to do with the staffing study report. It has been clear from the beginning to us, maybe not quite as clear in the issuance of that first document, but it's clear to us that this project involves looking at alternative responses, and I'll talk more about that as we go. The staffing study is kind of a point-in-time assessment, trying to understand where things are. It's one piece of the process, but certainly not all the process. The next section of the report has to do with the essential call-for-service report, which is largely the data that relates to the types of calls for service that the police department is responding to. That report was provided to staff about a week ago. It is still in draft form. It's in review, but that form, that report, that portion of the work should be coming to you soon. The next pieces of the puzzle involve a lot more work in terms of engagement and understanding where do we go from here. With these first two pieces of the puzzle, where can we take alternative response? And that's going to involve pulling together, like many have suggested, a group of folks to sit down and have some conversations about what alternative response could look like for this community. And to that end, we will be doing some additional direct meetings with some of the organizations who have been identified as having an opportunity or the ability to provide services, and those conversations will ultimately blend into and become a part of the proposed alternative response plan we're envisioning and have spoken with Mayor Marlin about pulling together effectively like a task force, like what was described, a committee to sit down and have those conversations and ultimately help assist with developing the proposed alternative response plan, which would include also a description of costs and things that would be associated with that type of plan. Following that, the next piece of the puzzle is, once that plan effectively is accepted, then the next section of work involves developing an implementation action plan. What do you need to do to get to that next piece of the puzzle? So, I certainly understand that there is, there are a lot of, you know, questions and concerns about kind of where things are at. Hopefully, as I go through some of the questions tonight, some of that hopefully will get a little more clear. I did want to just mention a couple of things, and I'm certainly not going to comment on everything that was said. I do appreciate the feedback from the folks that spoke. In fact, it's very important. It's quite critical to what you're trying to accomplish. Quite frankly, we believe that community collaboration is a cornerstone of what policing, what modern policing, what 21st century policing should look like. And so, I do appreciate those comments that were made. There were a couple that I just want to kind of call out before we dig into some of the other pieces. The first has to do with the data and outputs, and I would just tell you that this is a sound methodology. We stand behind the data and the outputs, and I understand that there may be some complications that folks don't understand. I will talk through some of those this evening because they came up in questions from others. But again, we do feel that the methodology is sound, and there is a nexus between the data and the recommendations that we provided. There's also a comment about the length of the report, and I want to just kind of call that out, and you'll find this is a kind of a commonality in the work that we do. We write these reports for multiple audiences, and we assume that people really know nothing about the content, which, so we spend a fair amount of time explaining different pieces and parts. If they were written for technical audiences, they certainly could be significantly shorter. But particularly the reports that we produce, they're intended to be consumable by, you know, the general public, by city officials, by government officials, and by the entities and organizations that they're written about. So, certainly there is arguably additional information that could be removed from them if it was a different audience, but that's the reason that they are constructed in that way. The last thing I wanted to just comment was, and I think this was from an email that we were quoted as saying, I was quoted as saying that alternative response wouldn't reduce workloads at all, and I don't believe I said that. If I did, I was incorrect in saying that. I certainly don't think that's true. I said something similar to that, which is that it doesn't always translate into a one-for-one reduction or a significant reduction. And again, those are other pieces of the puzzle that we can certainly talk about and should and will need to talk about as we go forward with the additional phases. So, with that said, I'm going to dig into the questions. I will read those questions for the benefit of the public and then kind of talk about the response to those. The first one was, when did the Barry Dunn release the report, the current report we're talking about, to the Urbana Administration and Urbana Police Department? And with a footnote that said the city administrator told two of us, council members, in early favor, that the administrator had already read the Barry Dunn report. The initial report was provided to the city on December 6th last year, and just so everyone understands, there is a significant intent to provide a quality document, and that starts internally with us. They go through not only the work that we do, but they go through subject matter evaluation internally. Our editing department goes through them. We have senior managers and principals within our firm that review them. And once we have what we believe is a good draft report, we send that to the entity who's responsible for it, and we ask them to review it for several things. One of them is typos, despite our best efforts. Sometimes we miss those. Appropriate reference language, that is, you know, are we calling things the right things? Any confusing language, any inaccuracies, things that we may have said that frankly someone says, "No, that's just not true." Making sure that we're covering the scope of the work, and then any questions there are about content. So, there's a fair amount of analysis that goes in, and as you can imagine, for those of you who have read this report, and I thank you, it's nice to know that people actually read the things that you produced, especially when they're that long. But there's obviously, it takes a long time to go through those, and there's a lot of detail involved in getting it to the point where it can be published as a final document. One of the things that came up, some folks asked about, has to do with the staffing model, and I want to just, I will talk about this in a little bit greater detail in a couple of sections, but first of all, the model that Barry Dunn uses involves really three categories of work. One is called operational labor, or you might know that we call it regularly within the report, we call it obligated workload. Then administrative labor, which is things like report writing and follow-up and evidence processing, and the last is uncommitted time. And certainly I've heard that folks have commented about how the uncommitted time by officers is largely traffic stops, and that's accurate. That's the information that's been produced. That doesn't necessarily mean that's all they do with their time. A lot of organizations don't track other noncommitted time, community and policing and problem-solving efforts. But nonetheless, those are the kind of the three buckets. The first, the next question, number two, was what is the definition of obligated workload? And obligated workload or operational labor is the aggregate amount of time that's consumed by patrol officers to answer calls for service generated by the public and to address on-view situations discovered and encountered by officers. It's the total of criminal, noncriminal traffic and backup activity initiated by a call from the public or an incident an officer comes upon. We call that, again, obligated workload. In other words, someone from the community summoned an officer to do something, or the officer observed something that demanded their attention that would have otherwise been called in. For example, an officer coming across a motor vehicle crash in an intersection, even if it had not been reported by the time the officer observed it, somebody certainly would have called if not for the fact that the officer showed up. Essentially, that is workload where there's an expectation that the officers are going to do something about that activity. Question three is, why is the 30-30-40 model recommended, and what do officers typically do in their unobligated time? So, there's a couple of different pieces to this puzzle. The first is that the model that Barry Dunn uses is considered... Essentially, that, that is workload where there's an expectation that the officers are going to do something about that activity. Question three is, why is the 30-30-40 model recommended? And what do officers typically do in their unobligated time? So, there's a couple of different pieces to this puzzle. The first is that the model that Barry Dunn uses is considered the national standard for calculating workloads for personnel for policing. It's the model that's used by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. It's used by the Police Executive Research Forum. It's also used by the International City County Managers Association. And effectively, it is a model that's used to quantify work volumes in a consistent and comparative manner. There were prior models that were used that were largely strict time-based models. They assumed a specific amount of time per call for service at 45 minutes, for example, and additional time allocated to non-enforcement activities. These prior models, which really date back probably 20 years or more in the past, had a lot of flaws in them because they did not actually analyze the time for call, the time of calls for service for each particular agency. And those, each agency can have a very different volume and time allotment per call based on their community. The obvious example is, we can take a look at your community, which is a more college-based community versus other communities who might have similar populations but are largely a retirement community. The amount of time it's going to take to manage each call for service in those two communities can vary greatly. So, ideally, what we're looking for is a model that extracts and uses these obligated workload totals or known data to reflect the amount of workload that's being, that's being engaged by the officers. In terms of what the officers do with their, with their unobligated time, a short list includes initiating public service, public service contacts. Certainly, traffic stops is a part of one things that they do, proactive patrol, conducting field interviews, making business and pedestrian contacts, and participating in elective activities from the organization such as community policing and problem solving. And really, in, in the 30-30-40 model, there is a presumption that organizations want to have a community policing focus and work collaboratively with the community as a part of the work that they're charged to do in helping and being a collaborative entity and providing public safety services. I also want to mention that when we talk about workload models, this model, there are no specific standards within the industry as it relates to job task analysis. But we know that when we look at a job, whether that's a, someone who works in an office setting or someone who might work in some other field, there's not an expectation that 100% of their time is going to be spent in a productive mode. I'm sure all of you, if you reflect on your own employment, there's times when you stop by your neighbor's desk and visit with them for a few minutes, and there might be other times when you're doing other things that don't produce a specific output. The 30-30-40 model really does not adhere to that model. In fact, it, it presumes 100% activity other than some break time that's, that's included in the administrative workload. The reason that this is important is, in, in studies that are done, looking at doing job task analysis, oftentimes a 60% loaded threshold is used. In other words, if you're working during your eight-hour day, typically only 60% of your eight hours is going to be spent in productivity mode. Some of it's going to be spent, again, in a, in a variety of different ways. The reason it's important is that the model that we use, the model that we use is looking at 100% of activity. It's not, it's not pared down. In fact, if we did that, if we used even a 75% workload model, that would mean that the total number of hours an officer had available to manage obligated workload would be reduced from 516 to 386. Obviously, we're not doing that, and there, there is, there's a reason for that, right? There are ebbs and flows in each of these categories on a daily basis, and we certainly know that even as officers are busy with other things, they do have downtime. But I just wanted to provide that as a little bit of background about the model and how the model works and how it compares to other types of analyses. There was a question of, is there any evidence or case studies that demonstrate the positive impacts of this 30-30-40 model? I'm not aware of any specific studies that have analyzed the use of a 30-30-40 model versus whatever models there were in place. I will say that, in contrast, anecdotally, we do know that overburdened staff lead to things like attrition, elongated response times, well-being issues for officers, and reduced public safety efforts, including community engagement and problem solving. And there is data to reflect that as the volume of obligated workload and the associated administrative functions increase, the availability of officers to do some of those other important community engagement, non-enforcement-type things reduces. Question number five, has there been any assessment or public input on if this model, 30-30-40, is best or wanted in Urbana? No, we did not specifically ask. It's a national model that we employ as we do this. I did want to talk a little bit about administrative labor, and I mentioned briefly a few things that, that are done within that, but just a quick, a quick mention of some others. Administrative labor, which is that second 30% bucket, includes report writing, patrol briefings, administrative preparation, report checkout, meal and personal care breaks, court attendance, on-duty training, vehicle maintenance, meetings with supervisors, special administrative assignments, personnel payroll activities, and various time for field officer training, equipment maintenance, et cetera. We do, we do ask organizations to self-report their supplemental workload or their administrative workloads, and we find that those data are consistent across organizations. And typically, what we find is that your administrative workload tends, that percentage tends to mirror the obligated workload. Therefore, if you have a 35% obligated workload, you tend to have a 35% administrative workload, or if they're both, one is 30%, the other is typically 30%. It's important to understand, though, that most organizations don't track that data, not on any kind of consistent basis, and that's not uncommon. And frankly, for most of us, if somebody was asking us to write down every single thing we did all day long, we would probably resist that at some point. But, so at any rate, we do look at that, and again, the, the information that we received from Urbana PD was consistent with other uses of that time and consistent with the percentage of obligated workload that we saw. Question number six, is there any data to support the Barry Dunn's assertion that on page 63, quote, "The modern United States population is highly mobile, and this includes criminal perpetrators who often travel between cities to conduct criminal activity and escape scrutiny from law enforcement. It should be expected that such travel habits and patterns would make it likely for crime and perpetrators from much larger regions to affect public safety conditions in Urbana." End quote. Again, going on with questions like documented home addresses of those convicted felons or felonies in Champaign County. The, the mobility of criminals is common and well-documented in, in many, many urban areas. Generally, criminals do not know where the criminal boundary, where, where community boundaries are, although in some cases, there have been criminals who intentionally go across those boundaries expecting that there will be less police service or less likelihood of being apprehended. We did not specifically seek this data in Urbana, but it is well-known that major interstate highways are common travel points for drug and other criminal offenders. Question seven, did Barry Dunn ever find an instance where someone died because of a too-late officer response time? We did not seek that data. Number eight, is Barry Dunn going to do more community meetings with the Urbana public? As I mentioned at the beginning of this, the next phase of this project will, will explore alternative service opportunities and will involve at a minimum, meetings with practitioners and possible service providers. It will also involve a series of guided meetings with an assigned committee to discuss possible solutions. That group will collaborate with city officials to determine any additional input opportunities from the community and when those might be most appropriate. There are a handful of questions about data that I want to talk a little bit about, and I'll get into those in a minute, but I want to kind of preempt that a little bit. The data that's expressed in this report comes from some different sources. One is from the Computer Aided Dispatch Data Set, or CAD. You've probably seen that number, the CAD, or the name. The CAD data set represents the most robust and complete data that quantifies obligated workloads. CAD data is generated through MetCAD. Anytime someone calls in, a report, that information is tracked, including the officers who respond, what time they started to respond, what time they arrived, how long they're there, et cetera. CAD data and their call for service types, unless they are altered by the officer in CAD, represent the initially reported call for service type as entered by the dispatcher. These call for service types often change when the data is entered into the department's record management system, or RMS. In other words, we may have, we may have an incident that comes through as CAD, through CAD as a burglary, but when the officer responds to the location, they may determine that, in fact, it's a theft. Those are different categories. The officer would correctly label it as a theft within the record system, but would not go back to CAD and change the classification there. That's typically not done. Some organizations do that, depending upon how their CAD interaction works, but generally that's not the case. Again, there are other types, like a domestic, for example, which would come in, which may come in as a domestic through CAD, but ultimately, once the officers get there, they learn that an arrest is going to occur, and that gets entered into the record system as a domestic assault or an assault with additional factors. Again, the data types listed in CAD may vary to some extent from the data types that are listed in records. The, the, part of the reason that's an important part of this discussion is, there's questions about NIBRs. Some of you have heard of, this was brought up in the report and some of the questions. NIBR stands for National Incident-Based Reporting System. NIBRs is the method that's used to provide national crime reporting to the FBI. That data comes out of the RMS, out of the record system. It does not come out of CAD, and there's very specific and different coding that occurs for NIBRs data as opposed to the call for service categories that are listed in CAD. The data calculations in this report were also filtered to reflect call for service volume managed by patrol officers, and the call for service volume managed by other UPD staff is also provided in table 2.59, which is the obligated workload model. If you recall from the report, we talk about supplanting data. Again, we have, you have officers that are set to handle calls. You have other people that come and take calls, even though that's really not their responsibility. Effectively, they're supplanting the volume. They're adding their capacity to patrol volume, which really is, it's not supposed to be there, right? They're supposed to be over here being detectives or being supervisors or doing these other things. A lot of the data that is within the tables throughout the report is squarely looking at patrol officers as the units that are responding to that data. So, as a result of that, there are some variations when we start to add supplanting data back in, and even as we do some additional calculations in other areas. One of the questions, question nine, did the Urbana Police Department have 18,963 calls for service in 2022? This question really relates to table 2.32, which is actually the cumulative total of call for service volume recorded in CAD. There, if you look at that table, there's actually three tables right, right in a row. The 2.32 is the total volume. The one right below it is the community-initiated volume. That is, there were 16,264 community-initiated calls for service managed by patrol staff in 2022. There were 2,2,699 officer-initiated activities combined to 18,963. Again, that's not 18,963 calls for service, that's total events managed by patrol specifically. Question 10, how many police reports did UPD file in 2022? The first question is, what is a report? And organizations look at this very differently. If you look at the table 2.29, we asked the officers from Urbana to self-report how often they do a report, and they told us approximately one per shift. Other organizations have said two per shift. It's difficult because people call a report different things. Typically, when we talk about a report, we're talking about going into the record system and typing up some kind of a narrative related to an arrest or some other specific incident. Within, within the UPD, within the CAD database, there is a disposition field which allows officers to indicate how the call was ended. In that, in that field, Urbana PD listed 5,887 incidents that had no reports and 2,800, I'm sorry, 3,892 that had reports. Again, if we were to do, even if we look at that number alone, based on the total volume of about 16,000, that's approximately one out of four, a little bit less than one out of four that resulted in a report, which would likely be a little bit higher than the one per shift that they reported, that they self-reported in the prior data. However, there are 22 different disposition categories, and it's unclear to Barry Dunn how many of those might include a report as well. The bottom line is, is that most organizations do not track the number of reports very well. Keep in mind that even when you look into records, in a records management system, you may have four or five reports with one incident, and it'd be very difficult without manually calculating that to figure out how many reports were actually written. Again, bottom line is, we don't exactly know that total number. UPD doesn't know that number, but certainly it is, based on the data that's in CAD, it's most likely higher than the one per shift that they self-reported based on table 2.29. On November 6, 2023, at the Urbana City Council meeting, the Urbana Police Crime Statistician told the public and the city council in 2024 that there were 44 shots fired in Urbana. On page 66 of your report, table 2.20, you account for 142 shots fired. On page one, on page 99, you report 137 shots fired, having more than one unit responding in 2022. How did Barry Dunn discover so many more incidents of shots fired in 2022? Again, first of all, as I mentioned at the outset, the data that's in CAD can differ greatly from what is in RMS or what is NIBRs reported data. The table 2.20, which shows 142 incidents, is different from table 2.48, which is the 137 incidents, primarily because of filtering. It has to do with how we look at primary versus secondary officers. Again, I, I can't attest to the information that's in RMS. I will tell you that Urbana Police Department does not push every CAD record into RMS. Therefore, it's likely that CAD data, well, it's not likely. It is the fact that the CAD data is a more complete data set than what you have in your record system. Question 12, on page 83 in table 2.36, none of the total numbers for hours, for the hours in the categories seem to add up correctly from the numbers listed above. What am I not understanding? The table in, in data 2.36 reflects the top five most frequent events by time spent as separated by criminal, service, motor vehicle, crash, and traffic. Each of those five incident types shows up, shows the volume for that type. The bold number in each of the sections reflects the total hours for that type. So, it would not be expected that those five listed items would equal the totals because there are others that are not listed, as that table only lists the top five highest volume of hours per call for service categories for each type. On page 80, in table 2.33, the total number of community-initiated calls for service is 16,264. On page 92, in table 2.40, the total number of community-initiated calls for service is 10,791. Why is there a difference? So, table 2.33 shows the total community-initiated calls for service as managed by patrol. We talked about that before. In table 2.40, this shows the response times by priority level. However, Barry Dunn has removed calls for service that did not have a call for service priority or the or that did not have an arrival time associated with that call for service. Again, as I said in the report, there can be a lot of reasons why there's no arrival time. Someone may be dispatched to a theft call. They may manage it by phone and then just clear the call. So we don't know when they got there. Therefore, we don't know how long it took them before they responded. In other cases, it may be that, that they drove to the site and didn't check out. There can be a variety of reasons why there's no call, no arrival time. But the reason for that discrepancy is that of the volume we looked at, they either lacked an arrival time or they lacked a priority assignment number within the CAD system, which made it incalculable. The point of that table is to have a good assessment of your average response times. And it does that despite the fact that a number of calls do not have an arrival time listed. Were there seven hundred and sixty-five motor vehicle crashes in Urbana in 2022? Page 103, figure 2.9. How come motor vehicle crashes doesn't appear in table 2.37 on page eighty-four for most frequent events? Figure 2.9 reflects seven hundred and sixty-five motor vehicle crashes of all types broken out by hour. Table 2.37, which has the more frequent events, actually does list accident property damage report, four hundred and fifty-seven, and accident with injuries, two hundred and thirteen. The total motor vehicle crashes managed by patrol was seven hundred and twenty-eight in total. Again, so some of the motor vehicle crashes had a high enough volume to reach that table, but not all of the categories of motor vehicle crash. If there were seven hundred and sixty-five motor vehicle crashes from page 103 and there were four hundred and thirty-four complaints that are community-initiated, on page eighty, and there were fourteen hundred and sixty-six officer-initiated traffic stops, twelve hundred and thirty-five traffic stops plus two hundred and thirty-one miscellaneous, page eighty-one and page 101, table 2.4, my, table 2.49, wouldn't that mean that there were a total of two thousand six hundred and sixty-five traffic events on the patrol workload count? What am I not understanding about the discrepancy count of three thousand thirty-seven? On page 102, table 2.50. There is a commingling of analysis here in the data. The community-initiated traffic calls for service, keep in mind, we have two sets of traffic. There is officer-initiated traffic and there's community-initiated traffic. Community-initiated traffic includes things like road hazards, driving complaints, parking, et cetera. Traffic stops are a self-initiated activity and they're not part of the obligated workload. Again, even though we, we believe there's a value in the unobligated time and a dedication toward that, that's not obligated load that leads to staffing requirements. So the totals that are being referred to in the question come from different service initiations and certainly would not be expected to total based on the question. What am I not understanding? This is question sixteen. What am I not understanding about the discrepancy between five thousand four hundred and one crime calls for service, which is community-initiated plus officer-initiated in 2022 on pages eighty to eighty-one, tables 2.33 and 2.34, and the total number of criminal incidents on page 137 in table 2.75 of two thousand six hundred and ninety-five in 2021? The methodology of CAD data calculations must be different than the National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIBRs. So again, as mentioned before, the table 2.32 shows combined totals from table 2.33, which is the community-initiated volume, and table 2.34, which is the officer-initiated volume. So that's not the correct reference in terms of the total anyway as it relates to officer or community-initiated criminal activity. Based on the NIBR's reported data, the UPD had two thousand six hundred and ninety-five reported crimes in 2021. Again, NIBR's reporting is very specific and is calculated very differently from the CAD categorization that Barry Dunn uses. To give you a couple of examples of this, Barry Dunn categorizes anything possibly criminal, including reported ordinance violations, even though they may not result in a charge. So if you have a report of fireworks complaint, that would likely be coded as criminal because if in fact they were shooting off fireworks, you could write MSC ordinance violation for it. It's quite likely that a lot of those data would show up in records or wouldn't even show up in records, especially if the officer went there and didn't find any issue or wasn't able to locate the call or locate the source. Again, RMS and NIBR's categorization frequently varies from CAD. I mentioned that before. Barry Dunn does not use RMS data for workload calculations because RMS typically does not contain the requisite timestamps. And many police departments, including UPD, do not record all of their call for service activity in CAD. Number seventeen, is the only reason Barry Dunn included surveillance technologies and weapon issues in the report because you were told by UPD staff that those were their concerns? Barry Dunn was not instructed to include those items. Number eighteen, using straight math and thereby creating an even workload for every officer every day, which is unrealistic. Could it be said that Urbana Police Officers handle, on average, five calls for service in a twelve-hour shift, taking up six hours of their time? And there's a math reflected here, eighteen thousand plus calls for service, fifty calls for service per day, ten officers per day, seventy-one minutes per call for service. Or is the spike for call for service during the peak times of eleven AM to eleven PM? And the lull in the overnight hours makes this straight math formula to arrive at an average just far too accurate? Maybe you've already answered this question. Ideally, workloads would be distributed equally for all officers. But as we know, about sixty-four, sixty-four percent of all the call for service volume currently occurs between eleven AM and eleven PM. Again, that's in table 2.38. As a result of this, officers working during that period manage a much greater volume than those on the opposite twelve-hour shift. This distribution requires a disproportionate number of staff allocated to work between eleven AM and eleven PM in order to maintain the thirty percent obligated workload total. And again, that's a part of table 2.60. Number nineteen, do police officers feel they weren't using tasers enough? Or do they literally need to buy more tasers to equip staff with tasers when they say, quote, more expensive, I'm sorry, more extensive deployment of conductive electronic devices on page forty-eight? The, the question refers to response by UPD officers as a part of the Culture and Climate Survey. The statements in that response suggest UPD may, may need to acquire additional tasers to make them available to all officers. It was not a statement about using them more frequently in the field. Question twenty, based on page 109, about average leave for one individual officer over a year's time, is it correct to say that on average, officers miss fifteen days a year, doing six days of vacation, two days sick, taking three days comp time, and two days training? As table 2154 reflects, officer leave averages about three hundred and thirteen hours per year. I don't get the same numbers as the question, but let me tell you what, the way it breaks down. Based on twelve-hour shifts, twelve vacation days, four sick days, six comp days, two personal days, one military leave day. And keep in mind that this is the average total. You have some officers who have been here much longer, who have a lot more vacation time available to them, and you have some newer officers. And so again, this is the total volume of leave divided by the total number of officers. So certainly, there could be significant variations across individuals. Question twenty-one, a yearly number of hours available at seventeen nineteen hours leaves three hundred and sixty-one hours from the standard two thousand eighty hours, fifty-two week, forty hour a week model. Should we divide that three hundred and sixty-one hours where officers are not available by the number of hour, of hours on a shift at twelve to arrive at an average number of days an Urbana Police Officer doesn't work in a year at thirty days? Yes. Patrol schedules are based on rotations that typically follow the fair labor, follow the Fair Labor Standards Acts or the six K exemption for public safety employees. And they generally don't follow a forty-hour standard, although some departments do that. Most patrol schedules are designed as what we call balanced schedules. Effectively, that means that we take two thousand eighty hours as a starting point. And the number of work shifts added to the schedule are derived from the number of hours for the shift divided by the number of hours for a year. For example, if you have two thousand eighty hours divided by twelve hours, that would equal a hundred and seventy-three shifts. However, given UPD's leave time, which is the number of shifts each officer works is approximately a hundred and forty-three, which indeed is thirty less than the one seventy-three. This math reflects a design flaw that is inherent in nearly all police patrol schedules. And that is those that, that is those schedules that follow a balanced scheduling approach. There are, there are thirty patrol officers allocated for UPD, thirty missing shifts times thirty patrol officers equals nine hundred shifts that must be removed from the schedule at some point during the year. Assuming that the one hundred and seventy-three shifts is the baseline for scheduling, that means the patrol schedule is going to be short by five point two police officers throughout the year, right out of the gate. So I don't know if you tracked all that, but if you have, you build the schedule and you have to take nine hundred shifts away, that's the equivalent of taking five officers out of the rotation. Most patrol schedules, including UPD's, don't really account for this variable. Question twenty-two, while this question may well be outside the scope for Barry Dunn to answer, are there investments that can be made to reduce obligated workload that don't involve investments in responding to the workload? Certainly obligated workloads can be managed in several different ways. One of them is diverting calls for service to more efficient methods, things like online reporting. Certainly outsourcing calls for service in parter and whole. Obviously, both of those are possible elements of this project. Technology solutions. Many organizations have found substantial efficiency in a number of different response categories by using technology. And also, another one is reducing service types and the associated service levels to the community. And I think I managed this, or managed, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. One that comes to mind is some organizations used to do vehicle unlocks and they've stopped doing that. Just said you can call a locksmith instead. So certainly, reducing service types is another methodology. The short answer is yes, there are other ways to do that. And those are all part of the conversation in terms of thinking about workloads and where you want to go from here. Number twenty-three, is Barry Dunn saying that the current six detectives, ten sergeants, and thirty-one patrol officers are unable, underlined, to handle the workload of five thousand three hundred and twenty-two crimes in two thousand twenty-two? Barry Dunn is not making any such statement. Here's what we are saying. That the obligated workload and the factors associated with call for service distribution throughout the day would require forty-four patrol staff, which includes officers and non-sworn responders, to manage the workload volume at a thirty percent obligated workload. The workload, this workload level supports an appropriate distribution of daily activities and aligns with full-service police agencies that engage a community policing-style approach. It is Barry Dunn's assessment that the number of sergeants is appropriate, but that they have been redirected from supervisory functions as they have been required to supplement the patrol response function. Barry Dunn feels that the number of investigators assigned to investigations at this time is appropriate. However, patrol officers currently manage a volume of criminal cases which could and likely should be redistributed to investigations for follow-up. If this occurs, it is likely it would increase demands in investigations, which could require, require assignment of additional personnel. Barry Dunn has recommended that the UPD monitor these demands and staffing levels, particularly if operational shifts occur in terms of redirecting investigative effort from patrol to investigations. Those should be monitored. Question twenty-four, did Barry Dunn recommend UPD should hire one deputy chief and, of police and three public engagement officers last fall? That was not a Barry Dunn recommendation. Number twenty-five, when Barry Dunn uses the word internal, does it mean internal within the police department? Yes. Shortest answer of the whole night. Twenty-six, am I understanding correctly that seventy-two percent of all calls for service by patrol had backup? Thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-nine calls had backup in a total calls for service of two thousand twenty-two of eighteen nine sixty-three? Eighty-three percent of community-initiated service calls for service had backup. Eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two calls had a backup out of a total of ten thousand five hundred and eight service calls. Seventy-three percent of community-initiated crime calls for service had backup. Three thousand nine hundred and five backups to a total of five thousand three hundred and twenty-two community-initiated crime calls for service from page ninety-eight. How can Barry Dunn say that UPD has a low backup rate? First of all, like some of the other questions, this, this data has co-mingled community-initiated data and officer-initiated data. When we look at backup, we do not look at officer-initiated data at all. It's not a part of it. The, in table 2.46, we reflect sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty-four calls for service managed by patrol with thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-nine total backup responses for a total combined number of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-three responses. Based on those data, UPD averages less than one backup unit, point eight four, if you want to do the math, per call for service. Despite this calculation, the number of independent call for service responses, that is, those without any backup, is actually higher than this. And that is because many calls for service have multiple units responding, which means that certain other calls for service would have no back, no backup at all. Calculating those details would be extremely complex and it's, it's beyond the scope of this report. On page one thirteen in table 2.58, you list the average time an officer spends on calls for service much lower than the average time an Urbana patrol officer spends on a call for service, seventy-one to seventy-two minutes. That's listed on page eighty-one. Am I misunderstanding the discrepancy? Table 2.35 on page eighty-one reflects the cumulative number of minutes UPD spends on calls for service by type, including backup. The data in table 2.58 breaks out average times per incident for primary and backup response. And just note that the data in 2.58 is used to generate table 2.35. Also, just as a quick note, you will find it in a couple of tables. We have merged motor vehicle crash data into the service table. So if you see a table that has service, criminal service, and traffic, that means that motor vehicle has been combined with the service data. This is a long one. Question twenty-nine, on page 105, Barry Dunn says, "UPD has expressed interest in exploring additional alternative response options and models, including a review of essential calls for service. Such efforts might decrease the number of incidents and total hours that sworn police officers need to spend responding to community-initiated calls for service." And at three, three hours, eight minutes, thirty-one seconds in the March twenty-fifth minute, twenty-fifth presentation, it was, it was said, again, the recommendations from Barry Dunn is, particularly in this case, it's a question of balancing your workloads against your capacity. And effectively, what we're saying is that your capacity is not sufficient based on your workloads. However, you don't necessarily need to solve that simply by adding more police officers to that equation versus at three hours, fifty-five minutes, and fifty-one seconds, where it was said, "As the conversations progresses toward additional alternative responses, the, it's unlikely that you're going to significantly reuse obligated workload, even though the additional things that come out of these types of resources," which is why our position is, it's not premature to advance your budget based on the recommendations. The question is, will workload, will workload decrease for police if we had community service responder, had a community service responder unit of some type? The first thing to keep in mind, and I said this, I believe, at the other meeting, is that, and I think there's been some misunderstanding about this, but alternative response includes two types of diverting calls for service, internally and externally. Internally, this includes online reporting, telephone response unit, non-sworn service response. Effectively, the goal is to align the resource response with the most reasonable and affordable resource. It's similar to going to the doctor and having an LPN or a PA meet with you as opposed to an MD. Effectively, it's Barry Dunn's assessment that various call for service volume could be directed internally to those resources. If the question is whether there will be workload decrease for sworn officers at UPD, the answer is yes. That would certainly occur if non-sworn and other internal resources were used. Externally, alternative response includes outsourcing certain call for service volume and/or engaging co-response or collaborative model or and/or engaging co-response or collaborative model or a hybrid of sorts. If the question is whether external alternative response could reduce workloads for the PD, the answer is yes. The volume of that possible reduction is a different question. Despite exaggerated statements to the contrary, external and collaborative response models do not generally result in a one-for-one reduction of volume. Although, again, I want to be clear, when you put in alternative responses, when you outsource, if you completely outsource, if you partially outsource, there's likely to be a certain reduction of volume, but it generally is not a one-for-one equation for a variety of reasons. Barry Dunn expects to explore these conversations thoroughly with the Alternative Response Committee as this work progresses. Question 30, does Barry Dunn recommend the Urbana Police Department seek license plate readers, or does Barry Dunn recommend, quote, "UPD should form a collaborative policing community working group to explore the addition of modern technology that can leverage human resources at the UPD while protecting the rights of the community they serve." Barry Dunn recognizes that technology and law enforcement comes with great responsibility and obligations to the community. Consequently, while Barry Dunn finds UPD lacking in technology in some areas, the addition of powerful technology is a decision that should be made collaboratively with the community the police department serves. Barry Dunn has made no specific recommendation to add license plate readers. Our recommendation is that the UPD seek, explore available technologies and the associated benefits and risks, and seek recommendations for adding those as appropriate. Question 31, on page 24 of the report, it is said 911 calls are from MetCAD. Quote, "MetCAD answers emergency 911 calls for all of Champaign County and provides direct dispatch service for all law enforcement and fire agencies in Champaign County." But on page 65, you refer to Barry Dunn displays Part II crime data derived from UPD computerated dispatch CAD. My question is, what is UPD computerated dispatch? This is the same data, it's just a little bit of a play on words. The data is UPD CAD data that came from CAD from MetCAD. Question 32, is UPD CAD data, I think it just answers, data derived from MetCAD that occur only in Urbana? Or does Urbana Police Department have its own computerated dispatch separate from MetCAD? Again, this is MetCAD data. UPD has a record system, but not an independent CAD system. Question 33, is there any data where patrol officers responding to a call out of beat were unable to respond to a call in their assigned beat happening at the same time while they were in another beat? Or a call for service comes in and the officer must abandon backing up the call for service in another beat and go to their assigned beat where a new call for service is happening in their assigned beat, causing additional added response time? Generally speaking, most organizations don't track these occurrences, although we often recommend it. UPD does not either. Despite a lack of tracking, this is definitely occurring. Keep in mind that UPD generally only has a maximum of one officer working for an assigned beat, which, which means that anytime backup is used, they have to be pulled from somewhere 34, could you reconcile on page 97 in 2.6.4, cover cars, you say 54.3% of the data in CAD related to primary officers, and 45.70 was for backup response? With on page 96, where you say only 23% of UPD primary calls for service are conducted in the assigned beat of the officer. Where are 4, 54.30 of the primary officers going mostly, in beat or out of beat? These are really unrelated data points. Table 2.46, which is on page 98, reflects that of the 2,000, 29,953 recorded response events by patrol, 54.3% or 16,264 involved a primary response, while 45.70 involved backup response. Table 2.44 relates to in, relates to in versus out of beat response. This refers to whether the officer who was responded to the call for service was assigned to the beat. It does not necessarily remain to pri, relate to primary versus backup response. In other words, a primary officer can be assigned to a call outside of their beat and still be considered a primary officer. So primary in beat is different from just primary, which could be in any of the beats. Question 35, what makes a patrol officer a primary unit? The call for service is located in their beat. I just kind of answered this. The primary unit is the designation created at dispatch. Effectively, there's a call, dispatch, regardless of where the call is, they're going to assign an officer as the primary responder, and then there may or may not be a secondary responder. And that primary assignment, in theory, would be this person assigned to their beat, but if they're not available in their beat, they're going to find a primary from somewhere else. Number 36, on page 96, you say, quote, "The UPD was operating well below its sworn strength," unquote, 12 to 13 officers per shift. Is full strength, full sworn strength in 2022 a roster of 31 patrol officers? If UPD was at full strength of 31 patrol officers, wouldn't UPD still be sending only one officer, five total, per 12-hour shift to each of the five geographical beats? Might be a question for UPD command staff. This is really highly dependent on the number of officers that might be working at any given time. Table 2.64 reflects officers' allocations across the 24-hour workday. For at least, for at least 12 hours, the shift allocation is, is at a maximum of eight, assuming nobody takes time off. So in other words, at the peak, based on the way the schedule's constructed, for 12 hours of the day, there are eight started out allocated under the balanced schedule. However, keep in mind that 900 shifts have to be removed from the schedule for leave purposes, and that means that many times the number staff is less than the maximum or the desired amount. For folks that may or may not know this, Barry Dunn's also working with UPD to look at the beats, specifically the beat structure and call for service distribution, to assess whether making adjustments to the beat would be appropriate. Question 37, if under-response is occurring in UPD and thereby just jeopardizing officer's safety, page 100, is there an injury to officer count directly related to not having enough officers at a scene? Barry Dunn doesn't have any data on injuries resulting from lack of backup response for UPD. On page, question 38, on page 148, the report says the Civilian Police Review Board has the, quote, "Power to subpoena witnesses' records and evidence. Minister Oaths Take Testimony and Ability to Exclude Witnesses," quote. Have you checked that against the 2023 to 26 Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 70 Union Contract? The side letter, at the end of the contract, and Article 22 in the contract prohibits the CPRB from doing much of what your report describes as a CPRB's powers. Barry Dunn has reviewed the language in, in the FOP contract and is not offering a legal opinion as to what CPRB may or may not do relative to the side letter or the ordinance that created the CPRB. Question 39, Urbana Police Department has had a racial disparity problem with its traffic stops for over 17 years. Latest study finds 46% of all traffic stops by UPD are African-Americans. Wouldn't the imbalance traffic stops in Urbana be a strong reason to implement early warning or early intervention systems? Database management tools designed to identify officers who performance exhibits problems or potential problems, as indicated on page 152. Shouldn't UPD be, quote, "Pulling traffic tickets," that is, checking every traffic ticket and compiling data as to which specific officers have an inordinate propensity to stop minorities? First of all, Barry Dunn did not study impartial policing data as a part of this project. But also, early intervention systems cover an array of criteria that departments can configure to alert the department to a possible problem for an officer. These can include things like how many times force was used, number of time officers were involved in police pursuits or complaints against officers, frequent use of leave time, and other areas. EIS are generally not used to isolate impartial policing questions. That's usually an independent analysis. More broadly, in response to the collection, to the question, collecting impartial policing data on all non-consensual police contacts and monitoring that data is an industry best practice. Question 40, how would a community alternative response model impact your staff recommendations for police and fire departments? We will address that in the next phase. And 41, what are the potential monetary costs of the community response system? Same answer, we'll address that in the next phase. I wanted to just jump for a minute to the tables that you have. They probably look a little different than this, but one of them should be like 3.3. They're probably bigger in your version. And I want to just talk a little bit about that. Within the, within the...
Oh, can I ask you a question? Are you talking about the handout that we were giving?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, because you said table 3.3, and the first one says 3.41. I'm sorry, 3.4.
Because what I just realized is that... What are the, what are the table numbers on those two?
We have 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, and 3.7. So it's 3.4 to 3.7.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. These, these tables are, 3.4 and 3.5 are derived from tables 2.37 and 2.36 from the first report, okay? And effectively, part of the reason that I wanted to show this to you is that as we, there's been a lot of conversation about the percentage of stuff that's service-related. And, and it is true that a lot of the service-related volume, and as you see in 3-point, table 3.4, there is a high percentage of service volume. Keep in mind that a lot of the service-type calls that people are talking about are not necessarily amenable to an independent response by non-police personnel. If you look at table 3.5, pardon me, table 3.4 shows us the event count, right? So those are the number of times we went to those. 3.5 shows us the amount of time that's being spent on those. And again, if you look at this, domestics are the highest from the service category. But again, as I mentioned, keep in mind, many domestics, although, although coded as service incidents from CAD, likely are converted into assault incidents on the backside. Similarly, removing the subjects, check the welfare, some of those other things also get converted. So when we look at the volume of where time is going, even things like an accident with injuries, at a, at 1,030 hours for accidents, it's actually about 1,100 if you, you include the categories one and three, that's about two full-time police officers, that's all they're doing, is taking, is going to crashes with injuries. So it's very important to understand the, the breakdown of what's the volume, how much of it could be diverted, how much of it may not be diverted, and whether that's even possible. And some of that has to do with the structures and systems that you have or don't have, and/or what it would take to create those systems. I do want to just mention, and you'll, obviously, you're going to get more data on this later, but within, within the essential call for service evaluation, as we looked at all of your call for service types, there are, there are only 11 call for service types that generate a .5 FTE or higher. In other words, only 11 categories are we, are we using half of a police officer to manage that volume on an annual basis, which is a very, which is a relatively short list. The other thing is, on the other table documents that you have, you will see, there's a series of kind of tables like this, and I'm not going to run through these, but what this, what you can see on table 3.6 and table 3.6, this is the, as we asked officers to categorize and evaluate which calls could be diverted and who could handle it, you'll see the call types on the left, and on the right, you'll see their responses as far as who might be able to manage that volume other than the PD. And if you go to table 3.7, this is the suggested different resources that came out of the community survey response. And I'd have to go back and look at that number, but I, I believe that the, I believe that the number of independent community responses to the call for service survey was somewhere around 110 or so, somewhere in that range, which is a really, actually not a bad number. So that's a lot of stuff. I covered a lot, and I'll stop now and take additional questions.
I, I just want to clarify, so the very first table's 3.4, 3.5, those are CAD data, and they're, they're not RMS data?
This is CAD data.
This is all CAD data?
Yep.
So when you said that this is the initial call and how it was classified, but it's not the end result of the actual incident?
Correct.
And are these unduplicated events?
Correct, these are independent events.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, questions? Why don't we start, we'll start on your end, Grace.
Thanks, Michelle. A few more questions here. So table 3.4, these 16,000, we're saying that's the total calls for service in 2022 for Urbana Police Department, is that right?
That is the total volume of, that's the total volume of community-based calls for service that patrol managed. So for example, there could have been a call that a detective took, which wouldn't be reflected in that total, or there could be calls that sergeants went to that no one else went to.
And where would things like homicide or assault or kind of more serious things fall in here?
Well, they wouldn't be in these tables. These are abridged tables. They would be in the primary report. I intentionally removed criminal from these, from these tables as they're abridged, but if we were to look at the original... So let me, let me, let me just clarify.
I think I understand now what I'm missing.
CAD data is categorized a certain way based on Barry Dunn standards, so that we can consistently do this across departments. If you really want to know how many homicides did you have, how many aggravated assaults, how many motor vehicle thefts, the best, the cleanest data is your neighbor's data, because that's been what's being reported to the, to the federal government in terms of statistics.
Okay, and who would serve on, you mentioned a committee when you were answering question eight, trying, who would serve on that committee to work alongside Barry Dunn in the next parts of the report?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, we're not necessarily people to make that choice, but certainly we would expect the police department to be involved. We would expect that someone from council would probably be involved, and we would, we would absolutely want to have folks from the service community, particularly those that are potential service providers, to be a part of those conversations, since they're likely to be the ones that are going to be ultimately involved with or be asked to either stand up or expand or provide those services.
And I had two more, do you want me to wait and go around?
Why don't we, why don't we take a couple, and we'll go, we'll wrap around. Shandra, do you have anything?
Yeah. So in one table, which I forget where, is, there was a category of make your own case. What does that mean?
So like an officer might pull up on, they might show up at a, maybe they're driving around, they, they observe someone, and it looks like the person, whatever they're up to, and the officer goes up, approaches them, and they're basically going into CAD, and they're just creating an event in CAD. They haven't categorized it yet, they're just categorized it make your own case. And most likely, again, if that turned into anything substantive, it would result in a, in RMS record.
And then also in these, what does CSO stands for?
CSO is a, it's kind of a generic term, it's, it's not the same term we used to. CSO stands for Community Service Officer. It's a non-sworn field response individual.
Okay, I thought so, but it was also Community Resource in here too, so I didn't know if there was a difference. Think that's it for right now.
Dale? Sharice? Chris, you already had 38 questions.
I know, I know. Can I thank him, thank her for?
Of course.
Okay. Michelle, thank you for trying to answer those, all those questions.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Um, so one of my questions, I was trying to find the page number, so I apologize for not doing that, but I, I did notice that, you know, there's the patrol officers, and then there's supervisors, but their supervisors, if I remember correctly, about 70% of the time were doing the work of patrol officers. And I... And I can't find that page, but does that sound right to you?
Give me a second, I'll tell you.
Well, regardless of the actual percentage, a high proportion of their time is, is responding calls for service.
Yes, the, I'd have to go back and find it, but as I recall, it was several hundred hours of response time. You'd think that I'd be able to find it in my own document.
That's all right, I mean, I've got too many things highlighted for me to be able to.
It's a, again. The percentage of their available time, a, a large portion of their available time is being spent managing patrol function, when in fact, their primary function is to be supervisors and, you know, to be a part of the, the administrative function. And so, yes, there is a large portion of it, I'd have to find that table.
So, that's, that's okay. I guess my, my main question, because you talked a little bit, actually not a little bit, a lot about how the different tables are for the patrol response. So are the patrol responses that include these supervisors who are now operating in a patrol response? Or does it not include that, and so there's even more? Does that make sense?
Yes, so the, most of the primary data is looking at patrol officers as primary responders. So when we talk 16,000 responses, that's, that's filtered to only look at patrol, assigned patrol officers for that volume. Again, when we get to the, when we get to the obligated workload table, we have pulled the volume of hours back in. We haven't add, we haven't re-quantified the total number of incidents, but we've pulled the volume of hours back into that table. Because effectively, the idea is, if our sergeants are spending 750 hours of their time taking calls, that's the equivalent of one and a half police officers that ought to be doing that activity but can't for some reason.
I, I guess, and maybe this is a better question for UPD, which is, if they are re-diverting their work to patrol duties, what is not getting done? On their, on the duties that they're supposed to be doing?
Certainly, and we've had some conversations with the PD about this, right? It's about mentoring, it's about personnel development, it's about coaching, it's about direct supervising. So there's those, and administrative functions that they might be assigned to or responsible for. So for them, that's their obligated workload, right? We don't look at it the same way, but it's their, it's their supervisory workload is over here. Now certainly, we expect a certain amount of sergeant time to show up on calls. Part of their job is to go to calls and make sure everything's okay. But the, but the number, the volume at present is, it's, it's a fair, it's a fair amount of their available time.
All right, thank you. Sharice?
Okay, now I have a question, because there's something that I need to understand regarding, I think you said, well, it's the obligated workload, non-committed, I think it was something, operation labor.
There's.
I got twisted around with everything.
Let me repeat that.
Okay.
Technically, we call it operational labor, which is the same as obligated workload. So operational labor and obligated workload are the same thing. We generally, we don't call it operational labor in the report. We call it obligated workload throughout the report. The next, that's the first 30% bucket, the next bucket is administrative workload, and the third bucket is the unobligated time.
Is that the same as non-committed?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay, unobligated time. Now, this is, this is where I kind of got, oh, kittywampus with stuff, because I come from an educational background, so I, I just have to, I have to dummy it up for me to be able to understand, because as a teacher, I would spend six hours making a lesson plan, let's say, for, for something that would take me 20 minutes to do. So I kind of want to understand what the operational labor and obligated workload thing is, because you said something also about how reports, there's a difference, somebody asked about, well, there was a question about reports, and you said there are different definitions for what a report is. And so I guess what I want to understand is how much of the time is used in documenting, and how much time is used in action? And how, how that may have an, an effect on community interaction? If that's, if you can answer something like that.
So the first bucket, the obligated workload or operational labor, that bucket is only the time from when dispatch calls them until they finish up the call. Okay, so it's, it's just, it's the time it took you to get there, the time you were there, everything you did, the people you talked to, all that stuff, and you said, yep, done with this call now. Cut, okay, that's the end of bucket one. Police reports go into bucket two. If I'm writing a report, that's part of the administrative workload or administrative labor. If I'm, if I have evidence, if I have to bag and tag evidence, if I have to download, upload my body-worn camera video, any of that kind of stuff is part of the administrative workload. Back to your question, for example, we know, like a lot of police departments, Urbana PD has officers that teach their other officers, firearms instructor, use of force, that kind of stuff. Nobody really tracks that. We know that officers spend X amount of time teaching others. We know that they spend X amount of time developing lesson plans. We know that they spend a lot of time doing many, many different things. I know in my department, I think we had somewhere around 30 different specialty assignments, something as routine as checking all the medical supplies in our cabinets to make sure those were full, or replacing the, the saline solution for our breath-testing instrument. All of those things take time, but it's all part of the administrative bucket, but most organizations really don't track that, that piece. But it, but it does, to the extent that we can, to the extent that we can analyze it, that second bucket, our, our experience is that second bucket of activity tends to mirror whatever the first bucket is, so in terms of volume.
Okay.
Hopefully that, now, I will tell you, we don't have clear line of sight on how long it takes officers to do reports, because again, most organizations don't track that. There are ways to do that, but it can be cumbersome and it can be kind of annoying, and most organizations don't want to do it.
So is there a lot of, of paperwork behind, after you do the call? Does that officer then come back? I just want to kind of understand the inner workings. I've yet to be able to make my police thing drive.
For example, if, if I went to, if I went to a fireworks call, and I drove to the area and I couldn't find it, I couldn't hear anything, I didn't see anything, it's going to take me about five seconds to go in and update the CAD record to say, you know, GOA, UTL, you know, gone on arrival, unable to locate, that's all I'm going to do. But if I get there and I find someone that's lighting off fireworks, and gee, I find out this is somebody I've talked to four times, and I'm going to write them a ticket for it, now I have to, I have to go over to the record system, I have to write them a ticket, I have to go over to the record system and enter all that information, their name and all of the pertinent details, and then I also have to write a little report that says, you know, I went, I got this call, I went here, here's what I observed, here's who I talked to, this is what, oh, and by the way, here is the evidence, and so that portion of it is going to take more time. If we have a DUI arrest, for example, those tend to take a fair amount of time, you know? It's not uncommon for a DWI arrest to take anywhere from two and a half to three hours, and sometimes longer, when you start to put all the booking things together. So incidents, criminal incidents are those that result in reports, and sometimes we have, for example, an in-custody case, right? We have a, we have a child custody question, and officers might go there, it may be a civil matter entirely, but the officers are observing different conditions from both sides, and they may opt to write a report to document what they saw, even though there's not a crime involved. So it's, I don't know if that helps you or complicates it, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of calls that take a very little amount of time.
No, it helps in the sense that I know, and I understand, like I said, you know, I, I had a classroom, and oftentimes, especially if I was creating a lesson, it would take hours for me to do that, and it may take just 20 minutes for me to teach it, but it's for the purposes, of course, of 20 to 30 students to be able to understand or get an idea. That's why I said you had to dumb it down for me, because I, some of this is way above my, what I, what my understanding and my comprehension regarding police practices can be. So that's why I needed to understand, the administrative workload can often be combined with the obligated workload in, as far as taking a call.
It, it, administrative workload oftentimes derives from an obligated workload, right? We have a call, and then there's another set of things we have to do after that, because of it.
But then you have to sit in the car and write all this up after you've dealt with whatever the incident was.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so that, that, that's when it goes into the administrative mode, is what I'm saying.
Correct, yep.
Which can also cause a problem if there's more than one call that needs to be handled. Am I correct?
Well, I mean, most police organizations, most police officers will, if, as soon as they finish the call, if there's another call that's waiting for them, they will typically go take care of that before they attend to a report, right?
Okay.
Unless, unless they have someone they have to take to jail or something, they, most will, they might end up having two or three or four reports they have to do at once, because they're busy going from call to call to call. So they're not going to, they're not going to pause and consider themselves unavailable just because they have to write a report typically.
Okay.
Michelle, do you have answers written out for all these questions tonight?
I have notes for myself that I wrote.
I didn't know if it, if they were available, if we could have any of these written, that'd be great. I'm not an auditory learner, so just talking at me is not a strategy for me to take it in. I have notes I've been taking, but if you have them written up, that'd be great. If it's extra work or an extra charge, don't bother about it, but if you do, that'd be helpful.
I don't have them in a format that I can share them at this point, but I certainly could do that.
Don't think it's worth any extra charge or whatever, however you want to do it. My other question was, do we have information on the percentage of current unobligated workload in Urbana? You're saying it's essentially zero currently?
No. It's a, it is a function of. Let's, let's just use flat numbers. Let's assume that your obligated workload was 30%. I don't know what it is, but let's say it's 30%. And we, and we would expect your administrative workload to be 30%. That would effectively leave 40% leftover for uncommitted time or unobligated workload. We don't know how much of that remaining percentage is being used, right? We do know, we can look at, at the traffic stop data, which is a, is a fairly small amount. And we can, we can discern from that data that, that there's a small amount of time being spent doing traffic. We don't really know what else is being done in that pocket. What I will tell you is that, and again, this is, this is somewhat anecdotal, but what we see is a, as, as obligated workloads increase, and as administrative burdens increase, we tend to see a, a, a response, a declining response in officer-initiated activity. The other piece of this, and I think goes to your point too, Grace, is that a lot of organizations don't track things like community engagement activity or problem-oriented policing activities. And tracking that kind of specific community engagement can be very important, or even things like doing any number of different unobligated workload things. The short answer to your question is, we don't know what that number is.
And we don't know the opposite. We don't know what obligated and administrative are to know what's that difference.
Well, we do know what, we do know what the obligated workload percentage is.
And what's the obligated? Wouldn't that mean the difference with 100 is unobligated?
No, what we're, what we're seeing is that your current obligated workload, I did find that table, by the way, it's table 2.59 on page 114, if you care, but your obligated workload right now, based on your personnel allocation, is 39.27% obligated. And again, if in fact administrative burden tracks with that, that means that you have roughly 80% committed time between obligated and administrative workload, which again, would substantially reduce the possibility of uncommitted, of utilization of uncommitted time. And the sergeant, between obligated workload and backup, the sergeants are dedicating about 3,300 hours, which is a, a very large portion of their cumulative available time.
So could I just restate, clarify, you're saying it's about almost 40% obligated time, and saying plus admin, double, so about 80% between obligated and admin? And so that would leave about 20% unobligated time currently in the Urbana UPD, is that what you're saying?
Yes, theoretically.
Thank you. And then my other question is, it, it would be possible to share that draft from December if the city would allow it, right?
We don't share draft reports. It's considered work product, so we don't consider, we don't share draft reports.
Shandra?
Yes. Okay, so we heard a bit about the 30, 30, 40, and that, that unobligated work time being a lot of traffic stops potentially. But you mentioned public service, proactive patrol, resident business contacts as other methods to use unobligated work time, correct? So if there was a heightened concern around, like, traffic stops and stuff, could, could it be sort of like a, and I guess this is a question for UPD, about, like, like, traffic stops are not your, like, not your primary or your priority during unobligated work time? It's these other activities?
Let me just say that, the way that the, that any police department prioritizes unobligated work is up to that department, right? And, and certainly, you know, there's been a lot of conversation around traffic, and I, I don't, that's a whole big wormhole. But let me just say that in a community-oriented, community policing-oriented department, the unobligated workload is really set aside for community policing types of activities. Certainly, it gives an opportunity for officer-initiated activity, but there's other things, like directed patrols or data-driven responses to motor vehicle crashes or other traffic hotspots, or again, community problem solving, any number of different things that could be in that bucket. And really, that's, the determination as to what the organization should prioritize is really a factor of what the administration and the community wants to be prioritized.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? Grace?
I have a comment, it doesn't have to be a question, since this is a discussion, to my understanding, is that correct?
It, it is a discussion with Barry Dunn, yes.
Thank you. I, I would like to know some differentiation on what recommendations came from Barry Dunn versus from the city. I think that's really interesting points, especially if some of the recommendations here didn't come from Barry Dunn. I feel like if we wanted a report and recommendations done by our own administration and our own police department, we could have done that for a much less cost without an outside agency. And I think the fact that it's all influenced in there together, and we are not able to have any draft information or know what came from Barry Dunn and what came from the city, I'm finding it really difficult to know what came from an outside party that we paid a lot of money for, and what came from our own administration, and I don't know how we can ever know that difference. So that's some of my frustrations, if anyone cares to respond, feel free, but that's my statement.
I'm happy to tell you that the police department and the city did not direct us to make any specific recommendation or to not make a specific recommendation.
Oh, I thought you said that your answer to question 24, did UPD, did Barry Dunn recommend UPD should hire one deputy chief of police and three public engagement officers? And I thought, again, not being an auditory learner, my notes have you quoting saying that was not a Barry Dunn recommendation.
Well, it, it was not a Barry Dunn recommendation, and it's not in the report. We didn't make that recommendation.
Oh, I see.
That's independent and apart from the work we did.
Okay, and then you're saying, you were answering that all the recommendations have come from Barry Dunn?
That's correct.
In this first phase?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions? All right, any other questions? Well, if there aren't any other questions, I would like to say, because I did promise the chief that I would say this, that there are some good things in this report, we've been asking lots of clarifying items here, which is good for us to have a better understanding of the data. But I, I did want to highlight a couple of things that I just found in the report that I thought were commendable by the department. The first one was, is that the, the staff feel that they're well-trained and well-supported by the city. There was some mention about support from outside entities, but internally, they felt supported. That our police force has gone above and beyond in training that are mandated by the state of Illinois, so we are doing a really good job in that, and that we have good hiring practices. So those are kind of like three high things that I, I just wanted to draw the attention to everybody. Did I state those correctly, Michelle?
I, I think, yep.
Okay, all right, I just want to check. All right, if there aren't any other further questions, I don't even have my agenda in front of me, but I don't believe there's any other agenda items on here tonight. So with no further business in front of the city council, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.